This is the Cochise County Board of Supervisors Work Session Tuesday, November fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-three at one oh one P M. Board of Supervisors Executive Conference Room fourteen fifteen Melody Lane, Building Chief, Bisbee, Arizona, eight five six oh three, pursuant to A R S thirty-eight dash four thirty-one dash oh two H. The public has had physical access to the meeting place fifteen minutes prior to the start of the meeting. Any item on this agenda is open for discussion. Roll call. Crosby is here representing Supervisor District One, District Two.
Supervisor English is present.
District Three. And we have at least two of us present and with Ms. Judd experiencing some technical difficulties. And we hope to get her on board here pretty quick. Members of the public like Ms. Joy Banks may also attend this meeting via Microsoft Teams computer or mobile app or via phone by calling six oh two six oh nine seven five one three or eight 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 six eight zero six seven one four. Conference I D eight three six nine seven nine one oh four pound. If you have trouble accessing this meeting remotely, call five two zero four three two nine two zero zero for direction. Work sessions are a time for county staff to inform and discuss agenda items with the board supervisors and public comments will not be taken. Introductions, we have Mr. Jason Fazio with us today and would you care to introduce your staff with you?
Sure. I have Operation Superintendent Robert Hill for Solid Waste and I have Operation Superintendent for Fleet Harold Nixon.
Thank you very much. And for the item of discussion, we have possible direction regarding Public Works Department informational update, including the following topics: Highway Corporate Work Plan, Solid Waste Division Update, Light and Heavy Fleet Divisions Update. Mr. Fazio will be here to address this.
Eric, thank you, Mr. Vice Chair. My name is Jason Fazio. I'm the interim director for Public Works. I would like to touch base on the Highways Division Work Plan. This is going to be for the second quarter of two thousand and twenty-four. We're getting into winter, so we're kind of rolling out of all of our chip seal season. Most of what we have on all of our road yards, we're working on maintenance, blading and right-of-way mowing. We're doing a lot of site distance clearing and so forth. In the red band, you'll see previous to today, we just, but within this quarter, we did a repair on a culvert in Hereford and we are finished up. We're wrapped up with striping the county roads for the season. Looking at these yellow bands to the right is Hereford Millings. This is a project that we're going to be working in. It's going to be more of a long-term project, kind of between jobs. And what that is, is we have the Hereford pit down here on Hereford Road and it's got between seven and ten thousand tons of millings there and that's a state leased land. And so we have a project to try to move those millings out of that site and to our road yards. What this will do is it'll free us up if we ever decide we want to do something else with that site, whether we want to lease it or not. We have to have those millings out of there if we want to have that choice.
And millings are ground-up pieces of asphalt, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay.
Moving on, we have a repair on Dragoon. It's a fissure that's down by an orchard. It's had a couple of repairs in the past. It's starting to separate again. I've gotten with engineering. Engineering and I are supposed to meet out there tomorrow to find out how we're going to repair that, but that is definitely on the board for repair. It's getting to where it's unsafe, so we're going to go out and address that issue.
How far does it extend beyond the roadway, Jason?
All the way across the road.
But it doesn't extend into the properties?
It does, actually. This, the fissure is probably quarter mile long total. Yeah. It's, it's pretty long. And it goes right across the roadway and as it's separating, it's not really making a gap in the road, but it's just uneven. It's heaving and, and settling. So we just want to make sure we deal with that before somebody takes a leap off of that road there. Hot mixing Bell Ranch Road, this is previous to today. We had just finished that out there. That is out on Bell Ranch Road. That's one of our dairy roads that started coming apart, so we went out there and did some compacting and fixing of that with some hot mix. So we have probably six or seven patches out there that we did and we're just going to see how those go before we decide what we're going to do with the rest of that road. The prep on Parker Ranch Road, this is a road that we were going to chip seal this past year. Engineering had some concerns about the base in that, on that road, so we were going to do some testing out there. We did not get it chip sealed in time this chip seal season, so this will be put off until next chip seal season if we even decide to go back to chip. This may be one of the roads that we want to look at going back to dirt with. The reason being is the base was never built properly and it has three or four fissures on it.
I was going to ask about that. It seems as though, as long back as I can remember, the P I S maps that the government blew years and years ago, that area where Parker Ranch Road is, is in fissure territory and it has been long before the dairy and long before, you know, other things going on out there. So again, when you look at roads like that, you know, do you want to upgrade them or do you want to put a base there so that, so it can be fixed quickly and easily? Because that Parker Ranch Road, it's, it's in fissure territory.
Yeah, no, I.
Forever it's been there, in that kind of territory. It's not like one that opens up someplace on Dragoon where we didn't know it was going to happen and all of a sudden it starts to happen.
Right. No, I agree and that's why I brought engineering into this. This prep on Parker Ranch Road, she was going to do some testing on compaction out there. We realized the base wasn't built at all back when it was chip sealed and it was hardly, probably for that exact reason. We already had these fissures on it that we were chasing, literally like every month we have to go out there and patch these things. So, you know, we have a resident that lives on that road that has voiced their opinion about taking that back to dirt. They think it was maintained better when it was dirt because we were able to go in there and blade it every eight weeks or whatever and make sure that those fissures weren't causing a problem. And so with that resident, and there's, and there's only a couple or three residents on that road anyway, voicing her opinion, you know, Jackie and I have decided to really look at that before we go in and chip seal. That might be a better road just to blade and keep it maintained. Moving on, we have a head wall that we need to address on Apache Pass out in Bowie. There was never a head wall there, so this would be new construction. It's a very small job, but what happened out there last monsoon season, this monsoon season before this one in two thousand and twenty-two, we had a heck of a monsoon season. It actually washed part of the road away and the reason is because there's no head walls and so that chip seal just slid right off into the wash. And so our idea is to go in and build some head walls and then rechip that.
What is a head wall made of?
Concrete.
I see.
And this is a regularly maintained route, so it was, it would be in our best interest to try to address that.
Is that something that's like a four-by-four piece of curb to level up the pavement?
Yeah, it's, yeah, it's basically.
Orange by four inch.
Yep. On one side where you have the downstream side, you'd probably go down into the ground a little bit just because you don't want to have washout. And on the upstream side, you may do the same thing. This will be something that I'll get engineering on as well, just to make sure we build it the right way and get it squared away, so we're not going in there to repair anything down the road. It'll be done right the first time. Did you guys have any questions about that? It's pretty straightforward because we're in winter right now, so we're not out chip sealing a bunch of roads and stuff. We're basically out there maintaining our dirt roads and mowing, clearing right-of-ways.
How cold does it get before you can stop going out on roads? In particular, I travel Double Adobe Road a lot and I noticed that they're putting some edging on it where it's, you know, chipped off by people driving off it continually. And when you use hot mix like that, is there, I won't say a date, but is there a temperature when you have to stop doing things like that?
Yeah, we can do hot mix while it's pretty cold out. You have to watch the material to make sure it stays hot. The material you're seeing down on Double Adobe Road is actually a cold patch. It's different. You can put that down anytime. You want it to be dry is the biggest thing for that.
Well, we got dry.
The hot mix is different. It comes in really hot and you want to put it down pretty much as hot as you can. I don't know if you remember how hot it needs to be.
Depending on what area you are and how far the travel is for these trucks on and the hot mix would put a factor on doing these jobs during winter time.
And just to kind of catch you guys up to speed, as you know, I stepped to this interim position and Fred Nixon, he's our operation superintendent for high, or for Fleet, he stepped up and he's taken a big chunk of the highway superintendent role on. Kevin Roberts is also sharing a portion of that and then I'm doing, I'm still doing some of my role as superintendent so that we don't fall behind. But Fred has really stepped up and he's doing a really good job. He's the one that's out there getting that cold patching done on Double Adobe and stuff. Just wanted to touch base on that because, you know, it's, it's a heck of a job and he's doing really good at it. All right, moving on to solid waste. I just wanted to kind of catch you guys up with where we were on our financials. What, what we did was we, you know, I created a spreadsheet that's where we can compare apples to apples. We have first quarter of twenty-three versus first quarter of twenty-four. You can see, I mean, obviously we're early in the year, so we don't have a lot of numbers yet, but our tonnage is down just a touch. If you look at the twenty thousand eight seventy-four at the very top of that, in the first quarter of twenty-three, first quarter of twenty-four is actually lower, but in the blue band right below it, you'll see that we have a higher generated revenue. And you might ask why that's the case. What that is, is that's through, the solid waste department has been, you know, currently Robert's doing the solid waste superintendent, really pushing these guys to remove material from waste stream, metal, cardboard and aluminum and things like that. And he's pushing so hard that we basically, we made more money off of less tonnage by taking that stuff out of the waste stream and getting it up to Tucson and selling it. And that our tipping fee down at that sixty-four ton.
So there's market now?
There's always been somewhat of a market. It's just the trucking costs, you have to really outweigh, you know, you have to really look at that. Where we really save is not so much selling it as not adding it to our landfill. That's the big savings.
Yeah, Ms. Judd has joined us at about one thirteen for the record.
Okay, so moving on, if you look at the total expenses down in the second blue band, our expenses are up just a little bit. That's because of our payroll. We went in in December of last year and we did some increases to try to get everybody up to market. We still had a ways to go, but this kind of gave us a jumpstart on what we're doing this year. And so our revenue, our total expenses are down, or I'm sorry, up just a little bit, but it's nothing that I can see that we're worried about at this point. Our profits are still sitting around fifty-four, six fifty-nine, okay? On our total revenue per ton, we're looking at seventy-two twenty-two for the first quarter of twenty-three and seventy-two ninety-seven for the first quarter of twenty-four. If you go all the way down to the bottom blue band, it shows the total expenses per ton and you'll see there the sixty-seven seventeen for last year at this time and the seventy thirty-five. So this is a little bit of an alarm to me just because it's costing more to put the trash away than the sixty-four that we're charging. But again, going back to what we're doing on revenues, because we're hauling all that material to Tucson and removing it from the waste stream, it's offsetting these costs so we still have a profit of two sixty-three per ton. Any questions on that one?
No, I think we always start to get alarmed when it looks like it's costing us more and we're charging sixty-four and we don't want to raise that unless we absolutely have to. Because it is an enterprise fund and it's supposed to take care of itself and we've finally gotten it into a position where it's paying the county back. It's, you know, it's getting into, to being a real business of its own. And so the beginning, we had a good waste, a good stream of revenue coming in from recycle and then that went, you know, down the tubes. And so whatever we can do to keep it so that we're, and, and thank you, whomever, you know, is in charge of, you know, the separations and getting us, you know, because it is important, those cells cost a lot of money and people don't understand that. And, and there are some places where people think that recycling is taking place, but it's absolutely going into a landfill somewhere. And that's the bottom line is if, if, if there isn't a place you can get rid of it, it has to go into the landfill. So anything we can get rid of, it may cost us a little more at that time, but it's going to cost us less in building those cells.
Yeah.
What's the total cost of this new cell?
So I was actually going to bring that up in this meeting because we have a P O right now cut for like three point one million, I think, and there's going to be a change order. It's going to wind up being like three point three. So there's going to be a change order for about a hundred and fifty thousand. I don't have an exact figure yet, but it's really small money for the project we have going. And what happened was with that, was there was a wet area at the bottom of the cell that they found. So as they got down, they dug, they excavated five hundred thousand cubic yards out of cell five. It's just a ridiculous amount of material. There's a man-made mountain out there now. And so when they got down in the bottom there, there was a wet area, probably the size of this room, but it went down twenty or thirty feet. And to keep the new liner from bulging and creating it to break, we had to excavate all that wet material, put in dry material and compact it down so that that liner had something solid to sit on. And that was all leftover water from the monsoon season for last, yeah. It's just got a lot of water out there. There's nowhere for it to go because it's in the bottom of a hole. So we do have a hundred and fifty thousand dollar change order that I could bring to you guys if you want to vote on it or something at some point, or if you guys want me to just change the P O because the P O's already made. We have that hundred and fifty thousand dollar change order. It's roughly that. It might be a little less.
How did you determine that it was from monsoon instead of a spring?
So the only way I really know that is because I've been working out there for twenty-three years and.
So you eventually ran into dry dirt, started digging it.
Oh, yes, yes. So that portion of it, we basically dug down until we found dirt that the engineer was satisfied would hold the weight. And then they actually had material tested to put back in the hole that they knew would compact and hold the weight and so forth.
What was the nature of the, they replaced it with?
It's, it's a native material that we excavated from, from the cell that was in a different location.
Adam Judd, did you have a comment or a question?
Yes, I do. So that brings up something interesting. I, I picture cells being a little bit like a pond, but do they, are they not like that? Do they kind of slope out? Because wouldn't water always be an issue if it was a bowl shape?
Yeah, so water is always an issue. Cell four, the way it was designed, there was a, as you kind of put it, a bowl and it was just to the north of cell four. And what happened was the water from the monsoon season got down into that, what was left of cell four that is not used for trash because it doesn't have a liner on it. And the water saturated down at the bottom and basically the end of cell four, there's a little spot on the north end that is the depth of cell five. And so basically that's already excavated. So that water sat on top of the excavation, the final cut of that excavation for cell five. So once all the material was removed for cell five, we still had this big wet spot that had to be removed and have dry material put in. So yeah, you're absolutely right. It's just like a big hole, it looks like a pond and water can be an issue doing these. We just don't typically have it here because we have such a dry climate. We, we don't always have these kind of issues.
Right. So after cell where it made like a, more like a scoop, but then I don't know how you'd trap everything inside of it, but then the water could go, oh, I'm just thinking, all right. So I need, I'm sorry, I have to go back to the highways because I came in right before the Bell Ranch Road talk and you were talking about fissures that you were working on. And then it seemed like it went into Bell Ranch Road, but were those fissures that I first heard about Bell Ranch Road or was there another location where you're fixing fissures right now?
Yeah, so just to catch you up, so there is a fissure on Dragoon Road that engineering and I are going to meet on tomorrow.
Is it the regular one right there at the crossing of Cochise Stronghold?
Yes. Yes, ma'am.
All right.
And then we talked about.
Because I heard, I heard that, I just didn't know that location. I heard a lot about it, but I didn't know the location. I got in right at the end. So I heard everything after that and, and you don't have to tell me more. I'll call you if I need more information. I was just curious what was right prior to that. Thank you though for trying to catch me up. I'm okay though.
You're very welcome. So we've kind of gone over the financial report. I was going to touch on the cell five excavation. We were kind of working through that. You know, they removed a half a million yards of, of cubic yards of material out of there. And we talked about the change order just a little bit. One thing that kind of ties into with what you were saying about keeping the tipping fee down and us talking about cell five that we could talk about as we see these payroll expenses going up, is the fact that we had planned on cell five being five million dollars. And so we stockpiled five point two or five point one-ish. And so we came in at three point three by the time we do this change order. And so we have a head start on cell six, okay? So potentially what I'm looking at is, you know, I've started this, I've started this basically in its strategies to keep the tipping fee to sixty-four a ton. And in those strategies, I have kind of outlined how we could use future cell developments, which we usually, right now we're putting in two hundred and twenty-five thousand per quarter. We, we could reduce that if we needed to so that we can keep, keep this tipping fee. So, you know, it looks like we're pretty solid and if we manage our money like it's a business, we should be able to hold on to that for quite some time still.
Okay. Mr. Fazio, I remember the, the amount sixty-four dollars a ton from when I was on the city council of Sierra Vista. So I wonder if you could talk about what contact that you have had with the city or other municipalities and the subject of their enterprise program versus our enterprise program? Want to get into that? I don't know if that's.
I mean.
You have the same group of people.
Right.
The citizens of Sierra Vista are paying for, for the tipping fees of the city and they're also paying the, the trash for the, for the trash trucks to come to get their, get their trash. So it's, I don't know, what do you have to say about that? I mean, you got, you got the same group of people paying, paying the city to pay us.
Yeah, I mean, more or less you have, well, we have the rate review advisory board and we were actually supposed to have a meeting with them prior to this one because I was going to get into some free dump day discussions and things, but we missed out. It's not going to be until the twenty-seventh. But when we do those, we talk to them about the tipping fee and I, I go over this same financial report or, you know, like Marty did in the past, he went over this, basically the same sheet with the same information. And they've always been happy, basically seeing how we manage this and make sure that we keep that tipping fee where it's at because this is kind of what all that consortium has agreed on, that this is where they want to be right now.
And this has been for a long time since.
Right.
I left city council twenty-fourteen.
Sure.
That's a long time to have it.
Yeah, this is really an amazing system that they have right now because as money gets tighter, we come up with creative ways of managing. And that, that's one thing that I couldn't stress enough is this system has always been managed like a business. And so, you know, we're just watching out for everybody that's in that consortium to make sure we do our best to keep that at sixty-four and never go over that as long as we can. Once we get to a tight spot where we have to have that difficult conversation, we can talk about it. But, you know, we're pretty healthy in some of these funds and with, you know, what I talked about with solid waste, Robert getting, you know, those guys energized and getting them out there recycling this stuff and keeping material from going into our landfill, it keeps these fees down. And so far, the R R A B, to my knowledge, is very happy with the way we're managing it.
I think it's, it's great that we're also setting aside money to refurbish the transfer stations.
Yes.
Because those don't last either. I mean, anything with moving parks is going to break down.
Right. And we put two hundred thousand dollars a year currently into that capital improvements, you know, two hundred thousand dollars a year into that. You know, sometimes we use some of it to make major changes or alterations or whatever to the stations, but we do that for that exact reason. Yeah.
I have another topic that I'd like to talk about from roads if you or Mr. Nixon want to address it. I, I think that there's a pendulum that swings back between the in-house work that gets done on roads versus what's contracted out. So could you tell me about why that is? Is it the personnel? Is it the prices that are available from contractors? What, what affects this pendulum that I'm talking about?
Sure. Well, like in the, like last year, you've probably seen that we had a contractor come out and chip seal one of our roads and fog seal it. So the reason we did that is because we had a, we had basically set a goal to get seventy miles a road done, ten percent of our chip sealed roads. So every ten years, basically on paper, we would be rechip sealing our roads. And so we didn't think we could meet that goal last year. So we used a contractor to help us out, basically hit that seventy mile mark. We exceeded it by fifteen miles, which is exactly pretty much what the contractor did. So we know now that we can do seventy miles a year with our staff as long as everything goes right. So we probably won't be using contractors as often as we were, but we did have some contract work in there because we didn't think we would meet the goals that we, we had set for ourselves.
Well, it isn't that I have a preference for one way or another necessarily. I, I'm concerned with, that any, any company or companies that are competing or have a fair opportunity to get contracts with the county just for, for market, market reasons. The other thing was, what about a grinder, which I've talked about, something that'll go in and, and grind multiple layers of asphalt down to where it's leveled and can be, would that extend the life or not, I guess?
For the most part, for our roads, because most of our roads are chip sealed. They're not asphalt. So A dot, yeah, that would pay off, but most of our roads are not asphalt and, you know, they're fairly thin, chip sealed, yeah. So there's, there's areas that it could be used, but it, it may be something that we would contract out because there's not enough for us to do it.
Yeah, that's all the questions that I have. Adam Judd, do you have any more questions or comments?
Um, I, I don't have anything else. I do want to say it's good that you're tasting, tasting some of the things in my district, those darn roads that wash out and, and the fissures. And I, and I hadn't, I hadn't recognized that you were hiring, you know, so you did, so you've got all your goals completed. And so I want to thank you for doing that because it takes a lot of time to fix something that you didn't know was going to break. And when these, when you're having to repair some of that stuff, I, that could easily set you behind. So I'm kind of happy to hear that you are. Of course, I want it to be fair too and get our best price, but I'm sure that you're doing that. Thank you for going out to contract. That's important so you can get your goals accomplished. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair, for the compliment.
Madam English, do you have further comments?
No, yes, I have a comment. And over the years on the board, the, the place where we get the most complaints is about roads. And I have to say that in the last five or six years, they're very sparse. We, we don't get complaints anymore. And so that's always been something that I think that the, the highway department, blood control, however you work together, can be complimented on that because everybody rides on our roads. And so it's the most, not everybody builds a house or not everybody has contact with other departments, but they all have trash and they all are on our roads. So I just want to compliment you all and I, just for the benefit, maybe the other board members, to let them know of how, how many staff less that we have now than we had fifteen years ago and we haven't really added roads. And so they're doing a tremendous job with the, maybe it's an upgrade in, in equipment that they're using. that they're using. Maybe it's training them better, better time management, et cetera, et cetera. But overall, I think it's a, a real prize that, that our roads are in many times better shape than city roads are or the highways are in some instances. So I think we can, you know, we shouldn't be prideful, but yet we should, you know, always acknowledge that, you know, that, that the department's doing a great job and, and hopefully we're supporting you on that. So that's all I had to say.
Well, thank you for that.
Thank you, Mr. Fosio, Mr. Hill and Mr. Nixon for being with us today. And please pass on the gratitude expressed by Madam English to your, to your employees, seeing no other.
There is. I thought I was done. So I have a couple more things I was thinking about. Is there a way to get people to help you recycle, not really do recycling, but some people would be tickled to separate their garbage out and deliver it wherever it needed to be delivered. There's people like in Casco Bell and they live far. They take their recycling to Tucson because they feel so strongly about having it sorted and having it put into recycling. And so is there maybe, it could just be one central location in the county where someone could take recycling and put the glass in one bin and the paper in one bin? Not every station, I realize we decided we weren't going to do that anymore. But would you think about that? Cause there's some people that drive their recycling even, you know, from Wilcox and Casco Bell I know of that drive their recycling to Tucson.
Yeah, so at, at our transfer stations, most of them have metal bins. Anything that's marketable, we're trying to let the residents separate. We still have to charge the 64 a ton just because it's, because of the trucking costs and stuff. But they'll, they'll separate aluminum and steel and stuff a lot of times on their own. And then the rest of that would be separated by the transfer station workers there, the solid waste workers and the seniors on site.
Okay, so they're still paying for it, but they're allowed to separate it or there is the bin for metal. Okay.
Yeah.
I didn't even know that was there.
Yeah, so with marketable items like steel, we still don't do glass and things like that, but steel, aluminum and cardboard.
Okay. Thank you. I, I don't visit my friendly neighborhood transfer station enough apparently.
You live in town.
But thank you. I did have something else about roads, but it sort of escaped to me. So I'm going to let you go. I am done now. Bye, Chairman.
Okay. So our next meeting will be November 28th at 10 a.m., a regular board of supervisors meeting, and this meeting is adjourned.